Good morning Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. This morning, our invocation is going to be delivered by Reverend Vincent Martin, Associate Pastor of Wilson Chapel Missionary Baptist Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor Carol Clark. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Let us pray. This morning, Father of the heavens, we come acknowledging the fact of God that we need your help on today. You said in your word that in all their ways acknowledge you and you will direct our path. We ask right now that you would send your spirit into this room and let it touch each and every member of each and every district that is represented. Heavenly Father, let them make decisions, not only that we look at the road, but let it look down the road. Heavenly Father, a decision that's going to affect the people of today and also the people of tomorrow. God, we just give you thanks in advance for all that you have done. Lord, continue to bless this great city. Bless each and every one that is here. We ask it in your son. Jesus' name, let every heart say amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, present.
Good morning. And Council President Oquina.
Good morning, present. All right, council, the minutes are not ready for the April 1st, 2025 through August 5th, 2025 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from the mayor's office.
Morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Madam Protem, members of the council, baby boy. And all the members of the public. There is no mayor's report this morning. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, okay, thank you. Without objection, we will suspend the rules for a couple of presentations. This morning, I've invited Coach Orlando Burks and Coach Quentin Lundie with the Birmingham Park and Recreation Basketball League to come and talk to us about a recent championship that they won. So, coaches, if you guys could come forward.
Good morning.
Squeeze in around the lectern there. Make sure you're in the shot.
Good morning. I'm Coach Orlando Burks, Center Director at MLK Recreation Center. Good morning, you got Ballin' Fast and we got Team Premier. These guys went to Orlando, Florida in July and played in the YBOA National Championships. We played against teams from Puerto Rico, Hawaii, California, Texas, now pretty much all over. And they brought home the national championship. These are our fourth grade national champions and these are our sixth grade national champions. And all these kids are Birmingham City School products. This whole team goes to Phillips Academy, all A B students. All these kids pretty much go to Princeton Elementary School. Our two wonderful volunteer coaches, Coach Lundie, Coach June, these guys don't get paid for this. They dedicate a lot of time to these kids. No money, Terry Gaines, just sending these kids to see to the next level. And without you guys, Birmingham Park wouldn't be where we are. So I'd like to thank Director Bennett, Deputy Run Hicks for all they do. Thank y'all for all y'all do. I see Mr. Ward, Ms. Smithman, they always in my center, so they know what we do. We working for these kids to get them a better future. And without you guys, it wouldn't be no us.
I just wanted to, real quickly, we're just, we're very proud of the product that we're producing with these young men. The lessons and the values that they're learning, perseverance, integrity, respect, discipline, hard work. We think that's the most important. We think that's more important than basketball. So we just thank them for giving us a chance to let us make them men. And we're gonna keep working.
Yes, I just wanna thank you all for having us again once this year. This is like the third time I've been up here. I'm happy for my boys. Also, I want to shout out my parents. If it weren't for them, I wouldn't be able to do none of this. They always present. They bring the boys to practice every day. They don't miss a tournament. So I just want to thank y'all once again.
Coach Burks, could you tell us a little bit more about the MLK Rec Center? And, you know, my understanding is that there are a lot of kids even from outside the city of Birmingham that come to play there on a regular basis. So, you know, tell the council a little bit more about what happens there on a daily basis.
Basically, we become, we call ourselves MLKU. That's our nickname because of these guys. We have good coaches that come over there. They train. These kids have their own facility that Coach Dorsey actually runs. But they all come over and play in our rec leagues and they all, we all support each other. And we just, we keep the doors open because of you guys. We there to eight o'clock every night getting work in and trying to be better. And so we have kids from Mountain Brook, Homewood, Chelsea, Trussville, Vestavia. They in MLK Rec every week, working. Yeah, they over here because they want to get their kids better. You know, when Mountain Brook started winning state championships, a lot of people don't realize, they all played in MLK Rec. That's right. All those state championship teams from Mountain Brook, those guys played in MLK Rec. Ty Davis, Trenton Watford, all those guys. As a matter of fact, Trent came back and did a back, a pack drive two weeks ago. So he came back and gave back to the community. So those guys come over there to get better. Vestavia, all of them, they over in MLK Rec. People say they in the hood. Why they over in the hood? They say first of all, and they getting better, second of all.
Yeah. Okay, now we want the young men here to introduce themselves. Tell us your name, your age, and what's, and we already learned that you guys, what schools you go to, but tell us what school you go to as well.
My name is Langston Lundie. I'm 10 and I go to Brock's Gap.
My name Amari Hinkle. I'm 10 years old and I go to Princeton.
My name is Amari Diedrick. I'm 10, I go to Princeton.
My name is Arlen Smith and I go to Penn.
My name is Jevy, I'm Bedford and I'm 11 years old and I go to Pell City.
My name is Dakarz Foster and I'm 12 and I go to Phillips.
My name is Taj Moore. I'm 12 years old and I go to Phillips Academy.
My name is King Smith. I'm 12 and I go to Phillips Academy.
My name is Chase Prince. I'm 12 and I go to Phillips Academy.
My name is Julius Harris. I'm 11 and I go to Phillips Academy.
My name is Jacoby Lewis and I'm 12 years old and I go to Phillips Academy.
My name is Kinsley Lewis. I go, I'm 11 years old and I go to Phillips Academy.
Awesome. All right. Okay, you guys, we're gonna go outside in front of the step and repeat. Oh, uh-oh, I'm sorry. My issue is trying to tell me that we got a video queued up. Let's roll the video, please. Awesome. Will we try and get a picture in here or? Yeah, yeah, okay, so stay where you guys are. I'm gonna come down and we're gonna get a quick picture.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I just wanted to say one quick thing. I just gotta give a big shout out to Coach Orlando. I know when I was working over at Hayes K through A several years ago, it was, it was not uncommon for kids to leave straight from the school and go right over there to the center. And anytime they would go, it was always a family oriented environment. Coach Orlando did a really good job in making sure those kids felt welcome, that they knew that this was a place of safety for them. And they knew that they were gonna have some individuals that cared about them and poured into them. And I'm seeing the connection that y'all got right now because it's a lot of kids that's in your program that are also, you know, still looped in with Phillips. And so it's a really good opportunity for these young men and women to grow up together, playing together, building that camaraderie so that, you know, when they're competing, it's just gonna be seamless. Like this is, this is no accident. Like this is always going to happen. And so I just want to give a shout out to you, your coaches, the parents who are involved. Like you mentioned before, Trendon Watford had an opportunity to come over, who is a NBA player, who played at Mountain Brook, who's from the city of Birmingham. Awesome young man. And I'm just glad that they were able to be able to be in the presence of greatness because they are greatness as well. So shout out to you and all that you all do.
I just want to commend all of you, the coaches, the parents, and the athletes, most of all. And not just athletes, but scholar athletes. You all represent the best of Birmingham. And I just want to commend you and encourage you to keep up the great work for yourself and for your community. Thank you.
Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Madam Protem. First of all, I want to thank Coach Orlando, first time meeting you, but all the coaches for just your families loaning you out to give up your time and spend time with these young scholars. As Counselor Clark said, representing the city of Birmingham, the greatness that, you know, that's here. Keep striving and thriving and to the Phillips Academy. I see Taj Moore, great Enos Watley, better known as Enemo, back in the day with the Phillips High School. I'm a Phillips High School grad, so some great spirits is flowing through that school. But I just want to just speak peace and blessings over your life that God opens up the floodgates of heaven, favor pour down upon you. People begin to start coming in, pouring in, giving you the resources that you need. So when you decree and declare things and speak it, it will come in existence. So Coach Orlando, thank you. And I also noticed that you are a great part of a Greek organization that my late uncle Johnny R. Hatchett out of college with you was. So again, thank you all for giving up your time, your families loaning you because it takes a lot to be committed and pouring into young people. And I just see greatness in all of you and your college careers and your future NBA careers.
Thank you. Coach Orlando, thank you for what you do and all the coaches. I think Madam Protem and I are daughters of coaches. And so we see the time commitment that you give. And not only do you give your time, but you also help the boys. I know Coach Orlando, you have given shoes to the kids, clothes, making sure they've got it home. Like it's much more than just basketball. You are changing people's lives. There was somebody there from, it's really loud, Jefferson County Resource Center. It was some probation officers and they were talking about the number of adults that would come to them and be like, hey, you really changed my life. And that's what you guys may not know, the fruits of your labor. But these young men will turn to the next councilmen, mayors, lawyers, doctors, businessmen, because of the things you have done. So I really want to say thank you for what you do. You know, I think our kids get bad rap sometimes, but it's always good to remind them that our young black boys, they are our future. They are positive, they are doing great things. And then to the young men, I'm so proud of you, just all the hard work that you go into. I know basketball is life right now, but this is a big accomplishment. A lot of adults can't even say they've won a championship. So I'm so proud of you and congratulations again.
Counselor Tate? Or Counselor Woods?
Thank you, sir. Real quick, want to appreciate the coaches, man. I know y'all putting in a lot of work and specifically to the young men. I think y'all are, y'all are learning lessons now that will serve you for the rest of your life. Like knowing how to show up every day, put in hard work, get better, work on your weaknesses. Those things that are gonna work in school and life, no matter what you do. Apply that going forward. I just want to congratulate y'all. Keep working.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you so much. And again, thank you to all of the parents who are out there making this, you know, a reality. So appreciate it. Enjoyed it. Thank you. Next up, we have former City Councilor Elias Hendricks, who's going to talk to us about the Birmingham Arts Coalition. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, oh, all right, my mistake. Yes.
Turn your mic on. Turn your mic on. It's a button, the gray button to the right.
At the base? There you go.
To the right, there you go. Lights check. Check, check. Yeah, y'all might need to turn the lights down.
All right. Check, one, two, 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 three, four. All right. How's everyone doing today? First, let me, let me pass out some of these. These are impact reports so you guys can review. I did prepare a video. This is, I wanted to bring to you some success from District Five and from the BCS. For the past few years, I've been running an academy called Box Academy at Phillips. So shout out again to Phillips for doing great work. And we have made some incredible progress over the past couple of years working with some of the young middle school students in the Birmingham City School System. So I believe I prepared a video. If you would like to run that, then I'll speak on the other side.
Vox Academy, where education becomes empowerment and students become leaders. Our mission, Vox Academy transforms Birmingham's youth into financially literate leaders through our innovative music, money, and movement approach. Breaking generational cycles of poverty and building economically empowered communities, one student at a time. Our vision, every young person in central Alabama will possess the financial literacy skills and confidence needed to create economic stability for themselves, their families, and their communities. Our innovative music, money, and movement mythology has achieved a 100% completion rate among participating students, demonstrating exceptional program effectiveness and return on investment. Vox Academy was founded by Elias Hendricks, a professional performer with extensive international experience and deep roots in Birmingham's educational and business community. Vox Academy represents a groundbreaking approach to financial literacy education that combines music, movement, and money management to create an engaging and effective learning experience for middle and high school students. Our work centers on educational equity. We understand that when systems fail, communities of color, we must build better systems with community at the center. That's why Vox collaborates with local educators, families, and organizations to create learning environments where students feel seen, supported, and safe. Our innovative programming blends social emotional learning, culturally responsive curriculum, and leadership development, creating a new standard for student-centered education. As we look toward the future, our goals remain clear. To expand to new districts, to elevate youth voices as agents of change, and to continue challenging the status quo until every student, regardless of zip code, can access the opportunities they deserve.
So as you can see, we've done some, some great work with some wonderful kids. Again, our tenants are music, movement, and money. So we teach financial literacy through music and movement. And we've had some amazing success. One particular story that I'm very proud of, every year we do a song that has the tenants of money in it. And this year, we had a group from the Welsh community come in and help create a song based on that. And I took one of my students from previous years, who's been with me every single year, Jordan Craig, from Phillips to a music competition. And she ended up winning a full scholarship to college and she hasn't even been in high school yet. So I'm very proud of that particular story. And I'm here today to let you guys know that I am, you know, bootstrapping a fundraising opportunity. And as you know, I'm a musician and you guys helped me before with a concert at the Lyric Opera, which did sell out, thanks to you guys. And so this year, I'm doing another concert with my vocal group, International Vocal Group Vox Furtura. And this year, we're specifically raising money to continue the good work here. And full disclosure, we have reached, as you can see, if you look by the numbers, six of the eight schools, but very few kids. And what I've realized over my work is, a lot of the children during the summer actually do have to work. And so I'm looking to expand this, to go into the schools directly, to meet some of the other middle school students in the district. So I'm increasing my budget to go into the schools as early as the fall, starting in the spring, to be able to take this extremely important program to every school, every middle school in the Birmingham City School System. So I have spoken to some individuals at the school board. I've spoken to the mayor's office as well. And so with the concert, which will be October 10th and 12th, featuring Vox Furtura, myself, of course, all of our classical soul components. The goal is to raise money for Vox Academy. So I'm asking for community enrichment dollars, as you, as you did before, to help us to provide some free tickets for some of the students and their parents to be able to come and see this in action. And also to be able to, to raise more money for the camp for next year. Excellent. Protem Alexander?
Thank you very much, Mr. Hendricks. You've been very humble this morning in just saying you, your world in music. We know you're a very talented artist. And I also know that your roots run deep in community service and servant leadership. I had the opportunity to serve with your sister, your big sister, on the Birmingham School Board. And of course, we know your parents work in our community. I am just excited to learn more about your program. I love the idea of marrying music with financial literacy. So often when you go to kids and you start talking about money and resources and that type of thing, you put up this brick wall, but I love the fact that you're infusing that with arts and music. So thank you very much. Very interested in learning more about your program. We have two middle schools in District Seven that I know would really love to have this work in those schools. So I'm looking forward to talking with you about that.
Thank you. All right, great. Counselor Clark?
Well, hello, so nice to see you.
Hi.
And I just want to compliment you on your innovative fundraising approaches too. And, you know, this, this seems like the next generation of We Care Academy.
Yes.
Which was your family's business that, you know, really helped build the foundation for so many children in our community. And so the fact that you're fusing your talents and your gifts with sort of the heritage, the legacy business in your family, I think is really commendable. Because I know your family knows a lot about educating young children. And so I'm just really impressed and want to encourage you and commend you. The event that we supported before really gave, you know, adults, in my case, seniors in our community, a chance to experience something really unique and culturally rich. And, you know, they raved about it. And I know from my own upbringing how important the arts are to healing trauma and, and just helping people feel good and, and experience beauty. And so the, the idea of letting kids, you know, young people, experience a performance like that, I think is great. And we just saw how our athletes were exposed to, you know, teams from all over the coun, all over the world, actually. And so that exposure is just so important for our youth.
I agree.
So good luck. And if, you know, if we can support, I'm a short timer here, but if we can support, we will.
Okay. Thank you so much. Counselor Woods?
Thank you. Mr. Hendricks, do want to just appreciate you for, one, coming back to the city, finding ways to, to make a difference. I think this is a creative program that we haven't, you know, I've seen a lot of stuff presented. This is something unique and something I think is needed. But more than anything, I just appreciate you coming back to Birmingham to do this. So keep up the good work and we'll definitely connect to see how we can help.
Thank you. Yeah, I will say, when I did move home, you know, I moved home from London. I spent 12 years out of the country. And, you know, I came back with these grand ideas of just doing my own music. And, and the kids realizing the need, this was during COVID. You know, kids weren't really learning reading skills and these things. So I feel very compelled to continue this. It feels like kind of a lifelong journey of mine and this is just the beginning. So I appreciate you. I'm not going anywhere. Counselor Smithman?
I just want to tell you, keep up the good work. I kind of did what everybody else has said, just empowering music because we know, since we were kids, they've cut a lot of the funding for music and arts in our school. And, you know, music therapy is something that helps our kids, you know, deal with whatever they need to and find different careers with it. So good luck to you and I'm kind of like Counselor Woods, whatever I can do to help you, just let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just round it out by saying, really, really enjoyed the concert and looking forward to another one. And we'll be here to support you.
Thank you. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hendricks, thank you for, and echo everything my colleague said. I know your parents, my mom grew up with your dad. Anything we can do to support, you know, the transformative innovation that you are bringing to kids' lives. I do see care here. We do have some restorative work. Counselor Clark did some things around restorative justice and music and investing in, you know, the studio. As Counselor Smithman would say, all of the cuts, the deep cuts that are going around across, you know, these nations. So it's to the point where we have to come together to combat things in our communities and work as a collective. So I really appreciate, you know, what you're doing. So I really appreciate, you know, what you're doing, any way we can, I can support, having six schools, Carver, J.O., Wyllam, Southampton, those schools in that western, northern, western corridor. But really appreciate, you know, what you're doing, and really want to just continue to speak blessings and over your life, that God just opened up the floodgates and just give you all of the needs that you need to take Vox Academy to the next level.
Thank you. I do also want to mention, when we do, we have a full curriculum of financial literacy that we teach the kids, with a certificate at the end. And we are committed to giving back at least $500 to each school's music program when we reach a quota of kids of 25 or more. So that's also something that we're committed to doing as well, and we have some private sponsors that are willing to do that for us as well.
Excellent. Thank you for being with us this morning, telling us about, more about what you're, you're doing in Vox Academy.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. Take care, guys.
All right. Okay, we'll return to our agenda. I'll read our statement on the conduct of business.
Mr.? I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Yeah.
I did have a question for the administration. If that's all right.
Sure.
Yeah, so I did get a chance to go to the Royal Neighborhood Association meeting last night, where they were sharing about some, some issues with, you know, flooding along the, let me see, I'm gonna give you the address. 8617 First Court North area, right there off of West Boulevard. And I think at one point in time, there was a capital project that may have been in place to address some of those issues with a culvert that was in that space. And so, wanted to, number one, just bring that to you all's attention, but then secondly, you know, see if we could get some updates about, you know, what is being done to address that, because that was something that was a great concern to, to that neighborhood. And so, wanted to bring that to you all's attention.
Yes, our counselor will make sure we provide you with an update.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the items be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Madam Clerk, could we please read through the items on our consent agenda?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda begins on page two with item number two. On page three, we have items three, four, and five. On page four, we have items six, seven, and eight. Please note that item six was recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. On page five, we have items nine, 10, and 11. On page six, we have items 12, 13, and 14. On page seven, we have items 15, 16, and 17. On page eight, we have items 18, 19, 20, and 21. On page nine, we have items 22, 23, 24, and 25. And on page 10, we have items 26 and 27, and that completes the consent agenda.
Okay. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove items from the consent agenda? Counselor Abbott?
I'd like to remove item eight on page four. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. And I would like to remove item six on page four, and item 11 on page five.
Yeah, I was gonna remove item six.
Okay. All right, got it. All right. And we also, we do not have any public hearing items on the agenda, so we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Hold on one second. Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. The consent agenda is approved. Item one, please.
All right. Item one on page two is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a Second Amendment to lease, assignment, and operating agreement with the Birmingham Airport Authority, under which the term of a lease, assignment, and operating agreement between the parties dated September 16, 1986, as amended by an amendment to lease, assignment, and operating agreement dated as of October 1, 2009, pursuant to which the Airport Authority has leased the Birmingham Shuttlesworth International Airport from the city for a term currently expiring September 15, 2045, will be further amended to extend the term of the lease agreement by 25 years, expiring September 15, 2070. This is an item of permanent operation, so we need you see first. All in fav- I'm sorry. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithiman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council President Pretim Alexander?
Aye.
And Council, Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, discussion, so Counselor Williams?
Yeah, why are we doing this if it, if it's already out till 2045?
Mr. President? Chief?
I'll bring up Mr. Ron Matthew, the CEO of the Airport Authority, to speak on item.
Good morning.
Good morning. So Counselor Williams, you want to restate your question?
Yeah, so the, the lease agreement that we currently have ends in 2045, so why are we asking for an additional 25 years on top of 2045, since it's so far?
Yes. We, we have two agreements now, one with Atlantic Aviation and the other with Millionaire. Atlantic is about to put $45 million worth, excuse me, $42 million worth of improvement into the facility, and Millionaire, $30 million. They need 30 years to do that, and we only have 20 years left on our lease. So that's why we're asking for the extension, so that we can get them to invest this money into the community just as quickly as possible.
I got you. What committee did this go to?
Budget and Finance.
Budget and Finance, okay. You know, I hope that this could be an opportunity where the council has more insight into what's going on with the airport. Y'all have done an awesome job of inviting us to, to specific events, but since, obviously, the mayor's office has the appointments to the board, there is a little bit of lack of communication in that, and that's fine. It's not, it, it, it is what it is, but, and y'all really have done a good job of it, like when you have different airlines that are looking for maybe an agreement with the Airport Authority, or maybe looking to expand a route, or did a new airline that pops up and pops out real quick in our market. But, and so we do appreciate that, but we just do want to, I think, I speak for myself and not the body as a whole, but I would like that this body be, have the same amount of communication as the mayor's office, even though the mayor makes those appointments, especially when y'all come to us for items like this and not the mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, one other issue that was brought up, brought up in Budget and Finance yesterday, the warehouse facility there, I forget the name of the entity that operates there, but you mentioned yesterday that.
The Kaiser Building.
One of, the Kaiser.
It's the Kaiser.
Kaiser, yes. You mentioned yesterday that there's an opportunity to address some issues there that this would impact. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
Sure. The current Kaiser lease expires in 2029. Obviously, what we'd like to do is completely reimagine that area, either with Kaiser or potentially with someone else. It is difficult to have those conversations and plan, because everyone's going to want to make a significant investment. We're gonna require them to make a significant investment, and they're gonna need the 30 years. And we, we don't have that. We can't truly start having those conversations with them until, A, we have determined, B, as we get closer to the 2029 timeframe. The deal that we have today, I believe it goes back to the late 40s, so it is absolutely in their benefit, and it is time for us to start to truly benefit from the asset that we have out there. We are not currently doing that.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Matthew, thank you for your service to our Airport Authority and your great leadership. I guess I have a question that I didn't have originally, and that's, you know, it was kind of sparked by Counselor Williams' question. Does the, I mean, this gives you more time than you need to meet the opportunities before you. Are there other opportunities that, like having 45 years ahead of you? I know the initial lease was 50 years. Does that, I mean, are there other opportunities on the horizon that having more time in the lease will give you a chance to pursue, or?
Well, more time is definitely better than less. And I can tell you, since my arrival, Birmingham's been on the rise as far as the airport's concerned, and we are looking at opportunities that, in some cases, the investment would require a 30-plus, for instance. But we are looking at the possibility of coming back with some better language and some changes in the future. This change here is needed so that we can get the $72 million of investment into our community as fast as possible. Our hands are a little tied right now, and so we're not able to exercise the appropriate pressure that we would like to in order to get this going, and we want to do that as quickly as possible. We will continue to have conversations with city attorneys and airport council and the board to come forward with an overall agreement that addresses exactly what you're talking about. We are going to the air shows, we are bringing back opportunities, we have opportunities that are pending now, and there's no question that 30 years will not entirely be sufficient as we go forward. So what we have to look at, but it will help us now, so we'll be very grateful for what you do now, but as we go forward, we need to really think about having an opportunity where we don't have to come back in front of you every time.
Okay. Well, I, I realize there's some urgency to, you know, the opportunity at hand to get the time extended, but I do think we need to work on the agreement, because it has a lot of obsolete language in it, and I know we're just extending the time today. And I spoke with the city attorney, and she's committed that we will clean up some of the archaic language that references the old city department that doesn't exist anymore. So I just think, we gotta do some work on the agreement. I would appreciate you all bringing that back to us, just even, I know we're approving substantially in the form, and those things won't change the form of the agreement, but if we could get a copy of a cleaned up agreement, I think that would be good.
And I think there's no objection to that, at least on the airport's part.
Okay. Counselor Abbott, did you have a comment?
I don't.
Okay.
I, I asked all my questions yesterday at Budget and Finance, so I'm satisfied.
If I may answer one of those questions? In January of 2010, we wrote a check to the city for the entire 59 years of the lease, and should this be approved today by, by the city council, once it's fully executed, we will write another check for the full term.
That's good. My question yesterday was about the $10 annual fee that they pay to rent the, to lease the airport, and I was just curious if they really wrote us a check every year, so that was my.
I even have the check number.
Well, you're, you're a very thorough man, and you've done a great job, but I'm good.
All right. Counselor Moore?
I'll just say this, Mr. Matthews, I just, you know, wanted to say thank you to you and your team. I think that since you've been in position, you have definitely cast a vision for our airport, and, you know, been able to, you know, follow through on a lot of that and bring a lot of opportunity to the city of Birmingham, which has enhanced the, the economic vitality of our city. And not only that, you know, you all have done a really good job at staying in contact with the community, the surrounding community members, residents in those surrounding neighborhoods, to just make sure that you address the issues that they may have, and make sure that we are in lock and step, and working together in partnership to make Birmingham the best place it could be. And I can't tell you how many times, you know, people fly into Birmingham, family members of mine, and they're like, man, this is a beautiful airport, like, this is really nice here. Because you, you have done a really good job at just enhancing that experience that people have when they come into our city, which is a big deal, because that's, that's the first welcome that they receive. So, just wanted to tell you publicly, thank you for the work that you and your team are doing.
Well, I appreciate it, but in all fairness, it starts with a great board, and you guys appointed a great board that allows me to do the job that I do, and we have excellent staff, and that's, the board has supported us in bringing that, those staff members in, and we have liberated some other careers, and we are in a great position now, and we intend to stay in that position. So, thank you very much for that.
Excellent. All right. We are ready for the vote?
All in favor, let it be done by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Item one is approved.
Thank you.
The next item is item number six, please.
Item number six is on page four. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city of Birmingham and Faith Chapel Christian Center Doing Business as Faith Chapel Cares LLC, under which Faith Chapel will develop up to 15 micro-shelters to provide housing for unhoused residents of the city of Birmingham. In consideration for the developers' agreement to complete the project, the city hereby agrees to provide city assistance in an amount not to exceed $1,224,125 and 77 cents in support of the project.
Move the item. All right. Chief, could we have explanation of the project?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We have Dr. Megan Venable-Thomas from our Community Development Department to speak to.
Excuse me, before you go, please note that there's a, a, a request that's been put in for the item to be withdrawn. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I said the wrong one, I apologize.
Got it. All right.
Good morning, councilors. I'm Megan Venable-Thomas. I serve as Director of Community Development for the city. What you're about to receive is a document that overview's the construction that is about to happen on the site. This is our last phase as part of this first development for our Home For All program. And so what you will find on here is a little overview of the site. You'll also see the site plan, as well as a breakdown of the budget. On the second page, you'll find some renderings of the street view of the front corner of the building that you'll see from First Avenue, as well as the side view of the development overall. And then on the third page, you will also find a list of supportive services at the request of our Budget and Finance Council that lists what kind of over-operational things will be happening on the site.
Yes. Pretim Alexander?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to be sure.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to be sure that, we asked this question yesterday in Budget and Finance, and there was some question, as money had already been approved or set aside, and we just wanted to be sure, this particular portion of what you're asking us for today, how does that relate to other items that we've already approved and what this will do for the site?
Yes. So we've already approved the operational budget, so that's all the wraparound service provision, what's going to happen on the site and be afforded to the residents that will be living on the site. Today, what we're talking about is the construction budget, so that's going to be all of the grading, all of the infrastructure, as well as the labor that it's going to take to be able to do the landscaping, demolition, murals, as well as putting together the prefabricated shelters. So we've already paid for the shelters, but this will assemble the entire site to prepare it for residents to move in.
Thank you.
Okay. Could you speak a little bit about Faith Chapel's part of the investment and their, you know, the, the term of their commitment and so on and so forth, so?
Yes. So their commitment is the one-year operations of the site. So they will manage entirely the residents, the staff, the maintenance of the structures on the site, as well as the construction that's happening on the site. So we're providing the funds for that construction. However, they are going to be managing the contractor who's going to be doing the work on the site. So they are responsible for all of the management of the site itself.
And, and the, the term of that agreement is one year?
Correct. Well, 18 months.
And what?
For the operations.
Yeah. And what happens after that?
So after that, we'll, well, in six months, we'll be checking in about the extension of the program, if they want to keep the shelters or not, and if they want to continue to extend the program or not.
So what type of clawbacks do we have in, you know, this is a sizable investment, especially in the context of, you know, 15 shelters. So, you know, my expectation is that that type of investment would go well beyond 18 months. So, you know, we want to, obviously, want to see this project continue long-term. So what kind of assurances can you give the council that this project will, this is the, the right circumstances to make this size of investment?
So I can have Attorney Scruggs speak to the clawbacks that are a part of our contract. However, as with this contract or any other contract we have with the partners that we work with over the years, after the end of their contract, they are not required to continue to do the programmatic operational components. However, we know, and the reason that we selected Faith Chapel as one of our partners, is that we know they have a commitment to serving this part of our population. They have a brick-and-mortar day center on this site where they have been providing these operations for many years and are a trusted partner in the community, and so want to continue doing this work. And so we believe that through our partnership together, through this commitment, that they would want to continue the program. However, again, our requirements will really just be based on the terms of this contract, and there are clawbacks that are associated with them doing what they're required to do over the terms of this agreement.
Yeah. Could you, so could we have more elaboration on the clawbacks?
Good morning. Beverly Scruggs and I serve in the office of the city attorney. There are clawbacks in place tied to Faith Chapel's performance. Those clawbacks require that, should they fail to do the services that they contracted to do, that they, they would have to return funding. There are also clawbacks in place in the form of the structuring of the, the lease as it relates to the shelters themselves. Because this is a pilot program, and we can't project past the pilot period at this point, then we have safeguarded the, those resources and assets so that they will be in place in the event that another provider has to be selected to continue the program past the pilot period.
Okay. All right. Counselor Williams, did you have a question? Okay, so Counselor Clark?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Dr. Venable-Thomas if the 18 months is driven by the wraparound, the, the length of time, the wraparound services will last? Because I know that's an expensive layer, but we are not leasing the property. We're, we're basically funding them to op, to construct and, you know, the physical part, and then exhaust the wraparound services over the 18-month period, and then any continuation will be due to fund, will be based on our ability to fund additional wraparound services? I'm just asking, because I, so, or for them to raise the money somewhere else?
Correct. So we would have conversations about what the future after the pilot would look like, what's needed for that, and where funding can be found to support that.
Okay. And then just to understand the 1.2 million, so some of it is not, I'm, I'm asking, is some of the funding represented here noncash because it's the structures we already purchased and will allocate to them? Like, there's a line item that says prefab structures, and I remember we purchased some.
Correct. So within prefab structures is the installation, the infrastructure, and then the labor to put the structures together, so, and delivery of the structures from the warehouse to the site. So we've really just put all of the things that are needed to be able to then put the pieces together on the site. There's also the footing, et cetera. That's what, part of the prefab, not the shelters themselves.
Okay. So we will allocate some of the shelters that we purchased already, plus fund the additional construction?
Correct.
And, and I'm, I share, you know, interest in it continuing so that we get a better return over time, but I get that the wraparound services are very key to this working, and those, we haven't funded that indefinitely, so. And I'm also excited that we will get to see this demonstrated because, you know, we've made a significant investment and a lot of energy has already gone into a pilot that didn't materialize in my district, so really looking forward to this.
All right. Counselor Moore?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. My question was going to be around the same thing in, in terms of, since this is a pilot, this is an opportunity for us to do a lot of assessing as to what will be needed in the future to support the ongoing services that will be provided by Faith Chapel. And help me understand exactly, well, I'm looking at the picture, and it seems as though this site is going to be cattacorned to their brick-and-mortar space.
Correct.
Right across the street from it. And so, as you mentioned, they've been doing this work for several years, and this is not something that they've just started. So I would imagine that because this site is going right across the street, I wouldn't see them discontinuing this work as a result of this pilot program, you know, being, being over with. And so, and like I said, you, you answered my question in terms of us being able to, after these 18 months, support them being able to understand what else is needed to be funded so that we can continue these services, because like Counselor Clark, I definitely want to see this work done. I understand that it is something that is important to happen in our city because we do have a lot of unhoused individuals that need these services and that need some, some platform to be able to get back on their feet. And so that was, that was my statement.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, the, I think that, that, the term that's actually listed is giving me some unease in terms of the improvements that are actually happening to the grounds. Have we had a conversation with them, or can we talk to them about more of a five-year commitment? Not necessarily them committing to run the program, but committing to allow the program to be ran on that property, even if they don't want to directly carry out the services, allowing another vendor to come in? What we don't want to do is have a, to lose access to the land after we have invested half a million and, and, because I'd imagine the shelters could be moved, but the site improvements are going to be at the site. So I don't know. Has that come up? I think that needs to be looked at just so we don't lose access to the site if for some reason, I'm not saying they have to commit to walking out the program, but just openness to another vendor coming in should they decide not to go forward.
So they own this site. This is part of their larger Faith Chapel site. So we could certainly have conversations about what a commitment could look like over a longer term or period. We could definitely have conversations about that, but at this time, ours is based on the parameters of the pilot program, and so that's where we've aligned the construction as well as the operational components. But we could certainly have conversations about that.
Yeah, I would like to know what that openness is to that. Like I said, even if they did not want to continue running the program, I think the program, because of that investment, should have the opportunity to go past 12 months.
Okay. Counselor Williams?
Thank you. So, and, and forgive me for not remembering, but what was the original funding amount that we did prior with the agreement with Faith Chapel where I thought we had bought all these shelters?
So we did a 1.2 roughly million-dollar agreement for the operations, and then we did an up to $1 million purchase of the pilot shelters at the very beginning, which is for both or all the sites as part of Home For All.
Okay. And the 1.2 for operations, that's different from the 1.225 today?
Correct. So the operations pay for all of the service provision, the food, the laundry services, so all the supportive services that you see on the third page. This is what helps them operationally do that, as well as have the staff to be able to perform those functions. This 1.2 today is for the construction on the site to include permitting, planning, superintendent, demolition and prep, landscaping, concrete masonry, et cetera.
Okay. I think that I did not understand when I voted last time for the, I thought that the 1.2 we were voting on, or whatever the amount was, last time for Faith Chapel, was sort of like sign, seal, go build, like, we're going, now, go, go do it. Like, that, that was my impression based off the information, and I might have been on a completely different page than everybody else. So I'm really surprised to see another one, one and a quarter million for this. I think Counselor Woods made some really good points, potentially about a five-year ground lease or, or agreement to utilize the property for longer. You know, when we add this up, and we're talking about $3.5 million, what do we, what, how many unhoused people do we have at any given time? 1,600?
So we currently have about 900 unsheltered and sheltered homeless, about 300 who are unsheltered.
Okay. So we have 300 people that are legit unsheltered?
Correct.
It, it, based on what you said. And this is 15 houses, and it's only a, a pilot project, and now we're looking at $3.5 million. You know, I wonder if we can have better economies of scale by utilizing some of our nonprofits that specialize in this and already have more built-out centers or assist them in, in building out centers. I, so, let me ask you some more questions, because now I'm, this has caused a lot of confusion for me since I thought we were done with this, with the last allocation. We just had a homicide where we had some, some stuff involving unhoused people that, that is right up, right, I don't know if it's the closest area, but is there, I don't remember, are, are we going to allow? Well, you know, one of the things that a lot of the shelters do not allow are narcotics or alcohol in their facility. Does this have the same requirement?
Yes.
Okay. And will there be a law enforcement presence here?
Yes, there will be a security present onsite, 24/7.
Law enforcement, not security?
So there's not a required law enforcement person onsite, no?
Okay. You know, I'm having a hard time allocating $3.5 million for, for 15 shelters because it, I, I keep thinking we're done with it after we allocate the funding, and we keep getting asked for more money, and the tab is kind of growing, what I would call out of control for this. I think that it's, I think everyone can agree, especially in the business community, that we have a real problem when it comes to our unhoused population, and that we and our nonprofit partners absolutely, from a moral perspective and from a, a city governance perspective, need to do something to assist them into transitioning into, into a lifestyle in which they are not unhoused and, and they potentially have employment or seek corrective issues if they have a, I don't know, mental health or addictive issue, you know, whatever this underlying issue might be, but at what cost to the taxpayer makes sense. It, how much nonprofit funding are we getting with this to assist the taxpayers?
How much nonprofit funding in general? So each of our partners, so if you look at the service provider list, each of the partners listed there are partners that are also a part of this program and will be providing services to this site, some of which will come from operations, but some of which comes from their already processes that they already commit to doing. So there has been a lot of engagement and collaboration for partnership that will be a part of this site as well as our second site. And so this is one of the sites that we're hoping to begin construction on. The second is with Urban Alchemy, which is a larger site. The reason we chose to do two, one, this one being smaller than the other, is based on building our partners' capacity to do this type of work, as well as being able to really build a case for this type of housing that we've not seen in this city or this region before. And so that's kind of why we chose this approach.
Okay.
Just a brief, because I want to clarify your question, Counsel.
Yes, Chief, go ahead.
So we're not asking the council for new money. This is already approved grant funding that was designated just for this, this actual program that was done out of CDBG and from the ARPA funds. So we're not asking the council for any general fund money. This is money that is already allocated to this specific project. So in the, in the, the, the realm of transparency, that's what's before the council, is the budget amount for the construction of the site, so we can move forward with what's already been allocated for the entire pilot program or Home For All.
Okay. That, that actually clarifies a, thank you, Chad. That actually clarifies a, a, a lot of my concern. So then, one question for you, Dr. Mitchell, is after, after the, for the, for the Urban Alchemy, the group that, you know, whatever, is that money also going to come from?
Yes.
Already allocated from ARPA, right?
That is, that is correct.
So no, there will be no general fund expenditure?
No, not at this time. It's just as Dr. VT has noted, once we're past the cycle, the three-year cycle, then we have to revisit that, the actual operating allocation, if it can be supplemented through CDBG funding that we get from the federal government, from HUD, or potentially something that we can see that we can find out of general fund. But I know that community development is very aggressive about finding grants and using that funding, so we don't have to use a general fund, especially for our partners that we fund out of CDBG for our unhoused shelters.
Well, I think that's a good idea and a good path forward, and it looks like, based on my competition this election, I'll be here in 18 months, and so I really hope that, and we are able to, we are able to keep that in CDBG dollars, because I think that the, I, you know, for, for our local tax dollars, I think that our citizens I think that our citizens deserve, um, something a little bit more robust, thank you.
Yep, Counsel Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Dr. Thomas and Mr. Starworth, Deputy Starworth. I, you know, I got a chance to travel, um, you know, with these fine young people to California, and I think I've said this more than once. I think in order for anybody to understand how to eradicate any situation, um, it comes by learning and educating yourself. When we look at the person that sits in the highest seat in the office in this country, have deployed federal agents in DC to, one, eradicate homeless. So I want you all to think about, what is that going to do? That is going to get people arrested, and it is going to balloon your jail system, right? And think about the cost of incarceration, what it costs to incarcerate people in this, in this state. The United States of America has the highest mass incarceration in the state throughout this nation. When you talk about criminalizing people because they cannot afford to pay rent, um, we, we really have to do some deep diving and some soul searching. Um, and we all know when people get released from incarceration, just right here in the state of Alabama, that people are dropped off, um, in these places and spaces. So I really want you all to search your hearts and operate from a, a standard of empathy and sympathy for those who are rooted in generational issues that we have to address. When it comes to mental illness, when it comes to people that were born in situations that they had no control of, I think we have to take a different approach. Because when I look at somebody who is sitting in the highest seat in the land of the United States of America, and have deployed federal agents on, on people, and saying, you talking public safety? No, 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 we not talking public safety, we talking about criminalizing people and, and ballooning out our jail systems, that's already overcrowded. Um, but I, I just want to thank you all for the commitment, and what I continue to say is, how do we move in a collective? The city of Birmingham cannot be the only partner in this. That's where we come in, where you advocate your state, your county, your private, your philanthropic people, business people. We all have to move in a collective, it is time to quit pointing fingers and work together.
Right. Um, I want to preface my comments by saying, uh, I support this project. I have been talking to people, uh, in, you know, neighborhood meetings, um, for the past few years about the Home For All project and about creating spaces, um, where people who don't want to go into our emergency shelters, um, feel welcome. So they, there is a need for their, another tool in the to- toolbox to address, um, to assist people experiencing homelessness and, and, you know, there's, um, some deficiencies when, when we look at the spectrum of services that are available currently, that the Home For All project would fill. So I, again, want to say that I support the concept of, of this project. I am very concerned that, you know, we're making this size of investment, even if it's not from general fund sources. Um, it, it's still, you know, a project that I envision is, is something as much more long-term than, you know, eighteen months. And, and there's, you know, capital investments that are going to happen on property that we do not own, um, that are significant, and, you know, I, I want to get, I want to see, um, our community have some assurance of, of more than just, you know, eighteen months of, of commitment. So that's the first issue. The second issue is that there is, you know, some serious problems happening in this, uh, area currently and have been happening. So, um, just this past Saturday, there was a shootout at the corner of First Avenue North and Fourteenth Street. Um, thirty-eight days before that, there was a homicide underneath the I sixty-five biaduct on Second Avenue North. And, and those are only just recent incidents, and, you know, I can tell you about dozens and dozens of other, um, less, you know, egregious, uh, circumstances that are impacting the stakeholders in, in the broader area. Um, so this, this is a area where you have, um, folks who are, you know, already operating, and there are a lot of challenges, uh, in, within this vicinity. You got a lot of great businesses that are trying to, you know, do their work on top of, you know, having to do, deal with the day-to-day challenge of, of having, um, a population of people experiencing homelessness and vagrants, and the, the people who predate upon those, uh, individuals, um, because of their circumstances. So, you know, what I'm saying is, is that I think, I think this, the Home For All project, you know, will help bring a little bit of structure to the chaos that's already there. However, I think that the situation in the surrounding area is a tremendous threat to the success of this project, when you've got other organizations operating in close proximity that, quite frankly, um, are creating problems for their neighbors. And, you know, I'm not necessarily speaking just to you, Dr. VT, um, but, you know, the, 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 the property owners, uh, of the, the Switch District in particular, you know, recently came to the council, asked the council to, uh, approve a business improvement district expansion, um, you know, which imposes additional property tax on themselves, um, to help, you know, bring in some additional, um, services like cap and, and other things. And, and there has been some modest improvement. But, you know, the, the homicide on Second Avenue and the shooting this weekend, you know, happened despite the, that effort. So what I'm saying is, is that as we move forward with, with this project, there needs to be just as big a commitment to addressing the issues in the, the broader surrounding area. Because again, I think, you know, things that are outside of Faith Chapel's control, it, that are in close proximity, will be a huge threat to their success. I want this project to be successful. And, you know, you don't throw a sheep in the middle of a wolf pack and expect it, nothing to happen. So that's kind of what I see what we're doing. Even though, you know, it's gonna have everything about the project itself, and the site, and the services, and the security, I get that, that's right, that's great. But literally, you know, the wolves are right outside the gate. So that situation needs to be exi- addressed. So now, I'll come back, again, I, I think that we need to secure some sort of arrangement, um, that gives some assure, some, us some assurance, um, beyond the, the current term of the agreement. So I would suggest to the council, um, and I'll make a motion to this effect, that we ask for a two-week delay to just have some additional conversation about this. And, and to give the ch- council an opportunity, whether it's in the contract language or, or otherwise, to, you know, know that we're, we're getting the best value for our investment. So I, I move for a two-week delay.
Can the rest of us have a comment before we do it?
Sure, sure. Yeah, no. Okay, so Counsel Abbott?
Oh, she was first. I'm first.
Okay, well, yesterday I asked some questions about this project, and one of them was, will people living here be able to continue to use and abuse substances? And the answer was yes, and then today the answer was no. So which answer is the real answer?
So there are no substances allowed on the premises. There is no substance use allowed on the premises. However, we do, they will not be turning away folks who have substance use issues because they will be providing ser- supportive services to help to, um, support people from whatever challenges that they might be showing up with. So no, there is no, the question that I heard asked was, if substances are allowed on the premises, the answer is no. However, folks who are experiencing substance challenges, they may be afforded an opportunity to be a resident because they will be providing the wraparound services to help them get, get off of substance challenges.
Okay, well, that, that part makes sense, except how are you going, because another question was, um, about the types of people who lurk around substance abusers, and those would be the people selling them the drugs. So they'll be outside the fence, but who's going to stop them from congregating around there? Because what we saw with Magnolia Park in Five Point South is the drug de- dealers came with abandon. They just showed up and openly dealt drugs, and it was like, you know, entrepreneurship. But it was allowed, and it was a problem for the residents and the businesses, so that's the reason for that question. But in our packets that we received, um, like on page two, it says incentive to developer, and it's blank. So what is, what is the incentive to the developer on page two, if it's left blank? And then the other question is, um, there are exhibits A through E, except we didn't receive them. It says attached, but nothing was attached. Did anybody find any attachments, or am I just having tech? Okay, well, I couldn't find them. I went from front to back, and I, I obviously I missed something, but I would have liked to have seen the attachments. So, um, and then the issue of weapons. Are, will there be metal detectors here so that people can't bring in weapons inside the compound?
There will be metal detectors so that folks cannot bring weapons inside the compound, correct.
Okay, and the drugs that are sewn into the hem of someone's pants, how are you gonna find those? I mean, you're not allowing drugs, but how are you not, how are you not allowing drugs? Or they not allowing drugs?
Um, I'm gonna have, uh, Pastor Deborah Blalock come forward from Faith Chapel that may be able to ask, answer some more specific questions.
Yeah, because I'm very enthusiastic about doing something to help these pe- poor people that are scattered all over the city, but, you know, the, the bre- the brevity, and then also the drug business that I have already observed elsewhere.
Uh, thank you. We do intend to have metal detectors. We're gonna be, um, checking backpacks, their backpacks. They won't be allowed to just bring them in without them being checked by security to see if there are things like weapons or drugs. We do that now at our day center, except we allow them to check their bags. We check that we don't open them, but they can't keep their bags. But in this facility, they will have, we will have to check their backpacks, uh, for weapons or drugs. Now, if they're sewn in the hem of their pants.
I mean, people are exceedingly creative when they're into drug abuse.
But we also intend to do, uh, checks of their facility, unannounced, just to make sure. And they, they will know that before they, uh, as a part of their onboarding process, they will know that we will take weapons and drugs and alcohol seriously, and those infractions could cause them to lose their home.
Okay, thank you, that, that helps. And then, last question, um, if after twelve months or eighteen months, whichever it is, this, um, Faith Chapel decides they don't want to do this anymore, do we come back and pick up our little shelters and the buildings and move them somewhere else?
That's correct, we would take back the shelters. We would obviously, um, have conversations about where that might go if we were to relocate, and we would need, uh, a, an additional or a new provider to be able to manage those. Um, but yes, that is part of the agreement if they are not able to, um, complete their commitment as it's based in the terms of the agreement.
Yeah, well, the commitment is so brief, that's what concerns me, is the brevity. And then in the construction budget for the project, prefabricated structures, we already own them, right? So why are we paying all this money for materials? And I guess the labor might be to put them together?
That's correct, that would include the transportation to the site, plumbing, HVAC, electrical and hardware, which has to connect the pallets themselves to the infrastructure on the site. That's included under the prefabricated structures.
Okay, so the prefabricated pallets, as they were called, have running water in them?
They do not have running water, but they have an HVAC, or they have an AC and a heat. Um, and so they do need to be connected. Now, the showers, which are also part of what we purchased, the bathrooms and showers, will be connected to water, that's correct.
That, that would be expected. Okay, well, that answers those questions, thank you.
Counsel Smith.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, I have a few questions, actually. Who, I may have missed this, who will oversee the daily operations and maintenance? Is that still Faith Chapel?
Correct, yes.
Okay, is that somebody they're gonna hire, or is it somebody you'll hire? Okay, what, what do you think their salary will be, does it say down here?
So that's not in this budget, we approve that in the operational budget.
Gotcha.
But I can resend that to everyone.
Okay, thank you, um, and then who, uh, who's qualified to stay? Like how we determine the fifteen people, or fourteen people who will stay?
Pastor Deborah, would you like to talk about?
And then can you talk about also, how will success be measured during this pilot as well?
There will be a co- a core team of us that's working on the, uh, screening criteria. We're including, uh, One Ruth Gordon as a part of the process. So we're, we're working on the screening, we've been working on it for months now. What would the qualifications be, what the screening process will be? Uh, so I don't have it all finalized, but we do have a core team that's working on it.
Okay, um, and.
You asked another question, I can't remember what.
Uh, how will success be measured?
By them moving from being alcoholics to being off alcohol and drugs, and we're getting them into a workforce, a job, a home. If we can't get them into a home or a job or train, then we failed. So our whole goal is to get them from where they are to a place where they're working, and they have, uh, they're, they're taking their medication, which is also a problem with many of them. They don't have housing, so they're not taking their medication. So our goal would be to have them on a place where they feel safe enough, and they trust us. A lot of our success is gonna be based on them trusting us. A lot of our success is gonna be based on them trusting us. So, we're gonna have to build trust enough with them to the point where they will go. They will, sorry, they will go into whatever program they need to be in or workforce development or whatever. We've got to build that trust and then move them up to a place of self-sufficiency.
Yes, sir. That's that's good. Um, I guess also like metrics, like will there be like timeline goals? You know, like in six months, we're gonna aim for this, twelve months? Like, 'cause, you know, the whole goal, like you were saying, is to get people into permanent housing. And so, you know, there are fifteen other people who may need this opportunity to be in the micro shelters.
Our desire is that every person won't need that fifteen, what, that eighteen months or whatever. They won't need that. Our desire is that at some point, uh, we've built the trust and they trust us enough where we get them, whatever, and they may be gone in six months. And then we can replace them with someone else. We we will have a dedicated full-time social worker.
Okay, good.
Uh, for them. And we, in the operational budget, we also had two admin support social workers, maybe some retired people that would have a passion for this population that will work along with the full-time social worker. She will be meeting with them on a weekly basis. She will develop as a part of their onboarding process. She will develop an individual development plan for them that specialized for them because every person is different. So, her role will be to develop that development plan and then monitor them weekly to ensure that they're staying on track. So, they have to commit to being a part of the development plan. They have to commit to the plan.
So, what if they don't commit to the plan?
Then they won't be able to be a part of the program.
Okay, that's fair. Um, some more questions. I think that's it for you. Um, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Uh, so, Dr. Dr. Thomas, what about AIDS Alabama? Is AIDS Alabama the second recipient?
No, uh, Urban Alchemy.
Urban, oh, it's about. So, remind me, where are the rest of the micro shelters?
They're housed in a warehouse.
In a warehouse. So, who's gonna have those micro shelters?
Urban Alchemy is the hope, yes.
And remind me, where where are they gonna put them?
So, we are working on the site um plan currently, uh, and that will be coming before council um in the next month or so.
Okay, and how many micro shelters do we have left? The, how many are in the warehouse? I'm sorry.
So, we have fifty.
Okay, fifty shelters, okay. Um, and then maybe this is for administration. What is the long-term plan financially to keep this going after we do the pilot program?
Well, at this moment, we don't know until we get to that point.
Okay.
Because this is only for three years and then we'll have to revisit it at that time.
Okay, okay. Um, you know, I I think a lot of times we forget that our transient residents are our residents too and they are people themselves. Um, I think I said this yesterday, we're all one paycheck away from being, you know, a transient resident ourselves. I'm really happy that we're starting something. I know that we had some during the World Guns, we learned a really valuable lesson about what not to do and what to do. I know you and Corey have done extensive research, met with them. Um, so I'm really excited because I think this is a pathway to stability and hope for people. I know we have a long way to go with addressing homelessness, but it has to start somewhere. So, I'm I'm really excited. We're finally getting to this point of this. So, kudos to community development. Um, it's it's taken a while, but we finally have gotten there as a city. But Attorney King, um, please forgive me for the agreement. What what is, I feel like we've heard some questions about us putting this on the land. What is the agreement with Faith Chapel?
Attorney Scruggs, come to address that. Beverly Scruggs with the Office of the City Attorney. Uh, currently, the agreement is uh for uh the city to place its units under the supervision of Faith Chapel for their construction and development on the site. And those uh those uh shelters will belong to the city. They are our property and we will retain ownership pending um the outcome of the pilot program, depending on uh whether the city and Faith Chapel decide to proceed further with their agreement. And should they decide to, then we'll revisit that issue as it relates to uh the long-term ownership and the outcome of those pallets at that point. But we want to retain ownership during the the uh term of the pilot program so that we can uh take another look at it as we get closer to the end of the the period.
What about liability? Like, what if something happens on the property? Who is responsible?
That's one of the reasons why we wanted to uh maintain ownership uh so that we can uh, as a part of our uh lease process, we can pass those uh responsibilities on to Faith Chapel. Uh, part of the agreement is that they will um obtain sufficient insurance, social services insurance and and other insurances uh related to potential outcomes and facilities of this sort. Uh, they will uh take responsibility for that and any liability associated with it will be attempted to be covered by that uh insurance coverage. And and as the uh tenant, they will uh take full responsibility for outcomes and actions on on the premises.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure the city is protected if anything happens. Um, so, I'm I'm really happy to hear about that. I think this, I think this will be good. I'll just be interested to see, you know, long-term down the line, what we're gonna do. But thank you, Mr. President. I think this is great and I look forward to hearing about what Urban Alchemy is doing for the other fifty shelters.
Quick question. So, the third organization that had submitted a proposal has now withdrawn their proposal?
They did not withdraw, but we discussed that at the time of the RFP that we didn't know if we would have the capacity to support all three. Um, and so, we decided to move forward with both Faith Chapel and Urban Alchemy based on our capacity, based on the funds that we had set aside um and based on the potential opportunity to have locations on the east and west side.
Okay, Counselor Clark.
I just wanted to take a moment because I'm getting a little choked up here thinking about my late nephew, uh, Charles Antoine Clark. He died at the age of thirty-eight after um having ingested a non-food item when he wasn't on his medication. His uh diagnosis was bipolar and schizophrenic. And um all of his crimes were committed during alcoholic blackouts. He self-medicated because he didn't have access to mental health care. And uh once he finally found his, you know, he went to fellowship house. He um was, he accessed community care through UAB and found his mental health key, high-performing individual. If I, when he was on his meds, he took a once-a-month antipsychotic shot. And if I told you he was mentally ill, you would tell me I was lying because he was a high-performing individual as long as he had his medication. The system does not allow people to get mental health care unless they are about to kill themselves and someone can get them to the emergency room. So, it's really, I mean, what we're talking about is creating a space for people to have the intervention, to get the care that they need to be highly functioning and performing because um it strikes me that I, even though there's only fifteen, I mean, I was able to get him to go back on his meds. Um, he got a DUI. He was under Chief Sparks' care, I mean, uh, Judge Sparks' care for a while. Um, and I was able to get him to go back because he wanted money. I said, okay, if you go back to community care, get your shot and put me on your medical records so that I can know you're getting your shot. I mean, that's all it took for him to get back. So, I'm I'm just thinking, if we can create a space that people are willing to go into. He was a frequent visitor to the Faith Chapel uh center to get his, to get his shower and wash his clothes. And he had a little spot under the interstate between some bushes where he lived by himself for a time, you know, and I could go check on him. But um until he got back on that medicine, he was not gonna function. But he was, he was free, he was cared for, he was, you know, riding his redemptive cycle to get around. But anyway, I just wanted to humanize it and remember my nephew, who was at times in his life like my son, who I sorely miss. But if he could stay on his meds, he would be alive today because uh he ingested a non-food object that didn't pass through his system that is common for his diagnosis, um, to do things like that. So, anyway, just wanted to put a face on it. I support it and um I think the number of people who can be helped will greatly outnumber the fifteen shelters because some people just need an opportunity to reset.
Yep, thank you. Um, Counselor Moore.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, one of the the questions that I did have for, you know, members of Faith Chapel uh is if there were any success stories from, you know, um, the service and the work that you all have already been doing uh that you could, you know, report to us um and just kind of share with us. Because I I think, you know, to Counselor Clark's point, you know, we we need to humanize this uh because, you know, there are several people in our community that need help and there are several folks that you all have already assisted uh in this space. And so, was curious about that.
Well, we don't have uh overnight shelters. We just have a day center and that's all we've had uh for the, for these year, number of years. But it's been successful. Uh, one of our success stories, we have had an individual that was with us in and out for a few years. And he sent a letter last year to us to let us know that he had moved back. I forgot what state. He that he'd moved back home and he was now with his family. And he wanted to, um, he wanted to thank us um for for treating him like a human being with with respect all the times that he came in. And our ministry, we have a ministry on Saturday mornings with worship and the word and prayer with them. And he wanted to thank our ministers that specifically had pulled him aside and prayed with him. And he wanted them to know that he was now back at home with his family. Another uh example, recently, I was helping a family member with closing on some real estate through their estate, uh, closing out an estate. And so, I worked with the attorney that was handling it and they assigned it to a paralegal in their office to handle. When the um transaction ended, he asked me, it was a Caucasian gentleman, and he asked me if he could talk with me privately after, and I said, sure. And he informed me that he had been through our center for years. He was an attorney that had some life situations, deaths in the family that were close together. And so, he became homeless and he was living in his car. He lost his practice. He lost everything, his family and everything. But he said that what he received at our day center, uh, the the showers, the laundry, the love, the respect, the encouragement, the ministry of the word that he received there, that it helped him to get back on his feet. So, he was now paralegal at the law office where I was. So, that's just a few examples.
And and I appreciate you for sharing that because, again, uh, I want to make sure that, you know, it's understood that this is not something that you all have just started. Uh, I want to say thank you to Dr. Venable Thomas because I know that, you know, when you all, you and Corey and your your staff, your team, put out the RFPs, you know, uh, you all were uh very intentional about making sure that whoever we partner with for this program, um, number one, had the heart, but they had the capacity to do this work. Um, and Faith Chapel has shown that they they do have that, do have both of those. Um, and it's a great opportunity for us to do exactly what you stated uh is, which is, you know, get people uh back to a place of self-sufficiency, back to a place where they are able to not only, you know, get off the streets and receive the love and the support, but be able to take care of themselves, um, be able to be homeowners, be able to get back into the workforce. We know that we have different positions within our city that need to be filled. And this is a great opportunity to be able to do just that. And so, uh, I want to make sure that, you know, we we take that into consideration because, you know, this is something that homelessness is something that, you know, impacts our whole entire city. Everybody, you know, can, you know, state how it has impacted or affected them in their different neighborhoods. Uh, and we have a partner that has stated, hey, we want to be able to serve and add value in this space. Um, and that's a beautiful thing, especially seeing as how this will be the first of its kind in our city, in this state, in this region. Um, and I don't want us to get right here to the the finish line and then, you know, we don't uh move forward with doing the very thing that we know needs to be done. Um, and so, I want to make sure that, you know, um, I tell you all thank you for the work that you have already done, um, as well as you as well, Dr. Dr. Thomas, um, for the work and the the patience and, you know, um, yeah, all the effort that you and your team have put into making this possible uh because this is a worth worthwhile initiative. Uh, and I believe that we'll be able to do a lot of great things uh through this. And even though it's just a pilot, it still gives us an opportunity to learn more about what is gonna be needed to take this further. Um, and so, yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that I put that out there.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So, the mayor wanted me to communicate to the council and to the public, first of all, his appreciation to you all, his appreciation to community development, to Faith Chapel, to Urban Alchemy. And I think it was stated earlier, one of the things he wanted it to be noted is, this is one of the many tools in the toolbox that he's looking to employ because obviously there's a delicate balance of ensuring that our unhoused and transient citizens, that their dignity is respected and the services that they need are provided. But we're also very sensitive to the discussions that are being held with our city leadership up from our businesses and our community. And both have to be respected and protected. And the work that they're doing, the work that Elena Melton is doing, he's going to be bringing forth, obviously, additional support as we move into the future. But he looks forward to follow-up discussion if there are additional questions that the council has with community development so that we can make certain that we move this portion of the toolbox forward.
Yes, thank you for that. Um, so again, I want to reiterate, I am excited about this project and want it to be successful. I'm concerned about the term of the commitment. Um, and, you know, I I also believe that, um, you know, that we have to set it up, create the best circumstances for success. Um, I I think there are some conversations that need to be had with other entities that are working in close proximity that are um quite could, just quite frankly, could do things better. And um, you know, I would want those uh conversations, you know, to happen prior to committing additional resources. So, again, for the third time, I support this project. I think there's, you know, some additional information, some assurances that I need and that the community needs um before, you know, I'd be ready to to support it. So, I I made a motion for a two-week delay. Would anyone like to second? Counselor Abbott seconds. All right. Madam Clerk, could you please uh do a roll call vote on that motion?
Before we have the motion, I have a question.
Okay, just a quick question.
It may not be quick, but I'll ask.
Okay.
Um, I do want to ask you, outlining in what the two-week delay, are you looking for more information about uh the protection and the the security and also the length of the project? Just want to be sure I'm voting clear clarity on what I'm voting.
Yeah, so, you know, um, I, you know, I haven't had the opportunity to uh have direct conversation with Faith Chapel to get some sense of, you know, um, what their intentions are long-term, um, you know, or or with our staff, you know, to um understand better, you know, what what's the Plan B, Plan C, you know, if circumstances change, you know, um, what happens, you know, how do we pivot to, you know, maintain the value of our in-? pivot to, you know, maintain the value of our investments, um, at that site? So that's one, one thing. Uh, but the other thing is, is that, you know, again, I think there's some, some significant challenges, uh, in the surrounding community. Um, and there's ongoing conversation with, you know, stakeholders in that, that district that are playing out right now. Um, and, and there's some additional conversation that needs to be had. So I just want to, you know, again, I support the project. I just want to allow, allow a little more space for, you know, a little bit more conversation to be had, um, so that, you know, everyone is comfortable moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, so Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Smitherman?
And, well, I can answer a question, um.
Yeah. Councilmember Woods?
No.
Council President Protem Alexander?
No.
And Council President O'Quinn?
Yes, okay, so that motion fails. So we're back to the original question. Is there any additional discussion, Council Woods?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Like I said, there's one issue I do think we need to look at resolving today. I don't know, uh, maybe Attorney Scruggs, but the, and I think it can be resolved via land lease, but we do need to have some sort of commitment to the property that extends past 12 months. And so, uh, if that is something that can be written into this agreement, I think we can move forward comfortably today. But I'll direct that to, um, the chiefs and see who can speak to that. But is the administration amenable to adding some language that would extend our, um, either via ground lease or, or another method?
I, I think Attorney Scruggs, but I think what's before the council is just a construction phase. So I think we're talking about a whole different agreement about what leasing or the operator agreement that I think has already been approved by the council.
So Chief, you know, that's an important point.
Well, the, the agreement basically moves, basically there are 12 months of operating the, you know, six months of construction, 12 months of them operating the program at the conclusion of that 12 months. You know, yeah.
Yeah, so it supports construction, but if we're not going to have access to the property long-term, then, you know, a question, you know, why we should move forward with the construction. So Attorney Scruggs.
The agreement does not address, uh, the city's access to the site or any time period related to that. The time period in question is related to Faith Chapel's access to the pallet structures. So that is the only, uh, issue that is addressed other than the, the development of the site itself. So as, uh, Chief Mitchell stated, uh, that would have to be addressed in a separate agreement. And, uh, the pilot phase for their use of the, the pallet structures is tied to that initial contract for the wraparound services and for the time period related to that. So that is the time period that ultimately controls the initial relationship between the city and Faith Chapel. And that is not what's before the council today.
Yeah, uh, those are, but typically if we were doing that, those would be companion items if we were going to be, uh, I mean, in, in this agreement, they're authorizing us to do work on their property, correct?
Correct.
Uh, in my mind, this could be added to that, to this agreement as an addendum that we could write right now. But I'll leave that up to the, uh, city attorneys office, but I think it needs to be addressed because we do have a timeframe, uh, listed in this agreement. And I think it's minor. I think, I think we make the change on our end, let Faith Chapel see if they agree with it before proceeding. And if it needs to come back to us, it can, but, um, because of the investment into the property, I think we need to have some sort of, uh, backstop.
Of course, I can't speak to what Faith Chapel is willing to agree to. We, in the office of the city attorney would be willing to make whatever changes, uh, the city decides it wants to make as it relates to the contract.
Okay. Um, well, I guess the changes I'm proposing and somebody, uh, may be able to articulate this and write it a little more eloquently, but effectively, um, we need to see something that speaks to a ground lease. I would say minimum of three years, but, uh, five years to where, uh, we have access to that site for the purpose of, uh, an unhoused program.
I could just make one point. One of the, the, uh, uh, driving factors in how we structure this agreement was based on being able to avoid premises liability. Um, so if we look at a ground lease, it changes, uh, potentially some of the, the, uh, issues we're trying to protect the city against. Um, I, I, I don't think at this point it has been, uh, determined whether or not Faith Chapel and/or the city, uh, want to continue the relationship because they wanted to see how well the relationship went. Uh, but I do think that while a ground lease is legally possible, it does open up some parameters that we'd have to take another look at as it relates to how to minimize risk from potential issues related to the function of the site.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I accept that as, as, I think that's an important point. Uh, another thought would potentially be writing, adding in the city, uh, on the city's end, the city having additional one-year options to extend this agreement as is. That might be another path forward, but we need to have something that gives us the right to continue the program at that, at that site, so. Yeah, I mean, Faith Chapel could, would have the opportunity to review any changes we make before they sign the agreement. And if they disagree, we could come back to the table.
Yes, we could, we can make that change. As long as it's not a substantial change, we can make any minor change.
All right, I'm going to table this item.
All right.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm staying. All right, so this, um, my item is tabled. So our next item is.
So, Mr. President, during this tabling period, can we fill in that big blank on page two of the development agreement? I mean, that's the reason I didn't vote, I, I would like to wait, is that it's incomplete and I still can't find the exhibits. I'll have to go get that pile of paper that they have in the city council office and look for them. So I just would like to have it complete if we're supposed to be approving it.
Got it. All right. Chiefs, y'all noting that? All right, great. Item 11, please.
Okay, I want to make sure I note that item eight was withdrawn. And now we'll go over to item 11. It's on page five. A resolution pursuant to the Jefferson County Personnel Board Enabling Act, Alabama Code nineteen seventy-five, sections forty-five dash thirty-seven dash one twenty-one point zero nine six and Rule eight point four B of the Rules and Regulations of the Jefferson County Personnel Board to amend the city's public safety salary schedule to add the classifications of animal control officer and animal services supervisor. Motion, please.
Second.
All right. Um, so the question here is, um, just give us an overview of what we're doing here, Chief.
Yes, sir. So what's before the council, um, our HR department worked with the Jefferson County Personnel Board to do a salary surveillance for our animal control officers, which is seven and one superintendent, well supervisor. And so they came back and did the surveillance and noted that the pay was, uh, was, was not right or discrepancy. So we're now increasing their rates for those officers and their supervisor to, um, be competitive with the market.
Okay, excellent. Any additional questions, Counselor Abbott?
Just one. So we've had the classifications of animal control officer and animal services supervisor, but we are changing the salary schedule.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's not exactly how it sounds, but.
Yeah, it's, it's just changing their salaries to be more in line with the other municipalities.
Okay, good, thank you.
Counselor Moore?
Closely related, but not related, I guess. Um, our ordinance around, you know, um, making sure that we put chips in, uh, stray animals, uh, to make sure that we can monitor them. And is, is that something that?
It's, well, it's unrelated to this, but, um, yeah, there, um, my office has been working on some, uh, potential amendments to our, um, ordinances related to, you know, pet ownership, um, you know, and I expect that over the next several months, if the council is amenable, um, that we would, you know, have that conversation, uh, a, a public conversation about, you know, what's possible and trying to, uh, extract from the community, um, you know, what they want to see happen in that regard.
Got you. Uh, I saw this and, you know, it reminded me of the conversation last night at the neighborhood meeting, um, that is, they're very interested in making sure that that happens. And so, um, wanted to say that.
Okay. All right, I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So item 11 is approved. And I think that covers all of our business items. So now we're to, uh, our announcements. And Counselor Moore?
Uh, so let me see, uh, District Four announcements, we have the Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association meeting that will take place tonight, uh, at six P M. at Smith Middle School, as well as the Northeast Lake Neighborhood Association meeting that will take place tonight at six P M. at Southern Museum of Flight. Uh, the Penfield Park Neighborhood Association meeting has been canceled. Uh, I will be giving the announcements for District Eight. District Eight announcements, neighborhood meetings this week. We have one tonight, the Bellevue Heights Neighborhood will hold its regular meeting tonight at six thirty at the Charles A. Brown Elementary School gym. Uh, if you missed the first two informational sessions, thank you, sir. If you missed the first two informational sessions on applying for the next round of the city's critical home repair grants, the next planned informational session is this Thursday, August fourteenth at five thirty, in person at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. Uh, if you can't make it in person, you can call this number for more information, two zero five, five eight one, three one one seven. The two-day application window will be online September fourth and fifth. Uh, again, you can get information on eligibility at, at the in-person informational, uh, on the fourteenth at five thirty at Fountain Heights Rec Center, or you can call the number five eight one, three one one seven. Um, there's an event, Reset Your Wallet, Create Healthy Financial Habits, uh, being offered to us by Ms., uh, Kim Holyfield, uh, with United, or with First Horizon Bank. Uh, this event is free. The date that it takes place is August the nineteenth, uh, at eleven thirty A M. Um, let me see, trying to see exactly where this is taking place. At any rate, reset your wallet, create healthy habits. Uh, if you would like to get more information on that, please reach out to First Horizon Bank. Uh, let me see. Oh, to register, contact Financial Stability at uwca.org. Uh, again, Financial Stability at uwca.org. Um, the countdown is on, uh, okay, the countdown is on. Election season is upon us and I have the pleasure of serving on the election commission, which is Counselor Clark. Uh, Greater Birmingham Ministries, uh, publishes an election guide and you can find an electronic version at issuu.com. Um, and so they will have the Five Points West Crossplex Business Alliance that will host District Eight School Board and City Council Candidates Forum, uh, Thursday, August the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, from five P M. to eight P M. Um, at First United Cumberland Presbyterian Church. Uh, so join the conversation. Um, and that concludes the announcements.
All right, thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next planning and zoning, uh, committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August thirteenth at three thirty P M. in the council chambers. That's tomorrow. Um, Neighborhood Association meetings tonight, we have at six o'clock, the East Avondale Neighborhood, which meets via conference call, and also at six o'clock, the Highland Park Neighborhood Association meeting. And they will be meeting at Episcopal Place instead of the Highland Park location because of the heating and cooling problems. And then they will have, after the meeting adjourns, they will have a candidates forum for District Three also at Episcopal Place. If you have, uh, concerns of, or issues of things you see in the city that you think need to be fixed, three one one is a good place to call, but you can also download the My Be Him three one one app, attach your photos, your own description, your contact information, or you can do it all anonymously. So I, um, highly encourage people to download that app and get to work on your neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. I'm going to come back to, uh, Counselor Moore so he can give the Willie Jenkins report.
Yes, so Men and Women's Day, uh, will take place Sunday, August the seventeenth at Damascus Baptist Church. Uh, the address is thirty-eight fourteen, Thirty-seventh Avenue North. Start time is three P M. Pastor Jeffrey Hoard, um, contact Mr. Willie Jenkins to find out more information. Uh, and then also Mr. Dallas Abernathy, um, will be having, or the funeral will take place, uh, this Friday at twelve P M. uh, at Mount Hebron Baptist Church. Um, and the men of praise, uh, will be, or singing and celebrating, uh, the life of Mr. Dallas Abernathy. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Moore. Now, Counselor Smitherman?
Thank you. Um, the South Tiddlesville Neighborhood will meet today at five thirty P M. at Holy Family School located at eighteen thirty-two Sunaway South. Also, the Arlington Weston Neighborhood will meet today at six P M. at the Weston Library. The next budget and finance meeting will meet on, will be on Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty-five at three thirty P M. in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, since September third. So that means that our next meeting for August twenty-fifth is canceled. Uh, we wrapped up our D-six farmers markets, uh, this past Saturday. It was great. Um, well, let's hand a thank you to all of our vendors, supporters. I look forward to, uh, next summer, a series of markets. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Protem Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are announcements for District Seven. The West Brownsville Neighborhood Association meeting is scheduled to be held on Thursday, August fourteenth by conference call at eleven A M. Um, I do, this meeting may not take place because I do want to make, uh, residents in D-seven aware that Mr. and Mrs. Horton, who are the leaders of the West Brownsville community, they did have two family members to, um, be involved in a very serious, uh, car accident. And so I really want to extend, uh, sympathy to them for those two family members that they lost in that car. So, um, please, D-seven, let's just keep them in our prayers. Um, the information session at the Fountain Heights Rec Center will be also on Thursday, five thirty for the critical repair program. The applications do open September fourth and fifth. Um, please, if you can, attend this information session. This is the third one that the city has already hosted. But, um, this will help you prepare for that process. We have a hundred residents that, uh, can receive up to thirty thousand dollars for critical repair on their home. I talked with a resident yesterday in Germania Park and she's a senior living by herself. Uh, she needs this type of critical repair, but we want to be sure that everyone is informed so that they will have all the paperwork, fully understand the program. So by participating in these information sessions, that will help you. So again, that is Thursday, August fourteenth, five thirty at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. On Saturday, August sixteenth, the Oxmoor Valley Community Farmers Market will be held. That's on that Saturday from eight A M. to noon, and that's at the Oxmoor Valley Community Center. Did just want to mention that Cooper Green is also inviting residents to a day of health and fun. That'll be on Saturday, August sixteenth. Uh, that will include free adult screenings, giveaways, kids' activities, and community resources and food trucks. So, uh, bring a friend if you're interested in any of those services. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. North Pratt Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at five P M. at Pratt City Library, located at five oh nine Dugan Avenue. Sandusky Neighborhood Meeting is canceled. Oak Ridge Neighborhood Meeting will be held Thursday, August the fourteenth. And they meet on conference call. You can dial in by calling nine five two two oh six four nine one eight, pass code two two three four one eight. Cooper City Neighborhood also will be meeting on Thursday at six P M. at the Cooper City Rec Center, located at thirty-nine oh one Fourth Street West. Next Public Safety Meeting is today at one P M. in the council chamber. I do want to thank One Hood, uh, Jacoby Williams, Raphael King, Timothy Lanier Gabriel, um, and all those guys, um, Carson, Danny Danger, all those individuals, Deborah Danger and her team, they invited me out and partnered with them to be a part of the One Hood. Backpack giveaway this weekend, we were over in the Southampton Community where we were able to bless, um, a lot of young people with, you know, book bags and supplies. Then we had an opportunity to leave from there to go over to the Sixth Pratt, uh, Community Fund Day, you know, just graced in there, greeted, speak, spoke to people, so they had, they were having a grand time there. I want to mention myself and, uh, Commissioner Sheila Tyson on this Saturday and Sunday, August sixteenth and seventeen, will, uh, present the Hope Fest, which is located, which will be at the Enslie Park. So, so some of the partners in there is the Six, Six, um, Enslie Neighborhoods, um, Beast will be sponsoring the Kids Zone, Alabama Election Protection, uh, Black Women Roundtable of Alabama, the City of Birmingham Royal Divinities with Pastor Davis. So, this is gonna be a a great opportunity for, to bridge the gap in community. Um, Young Vocal will be there on Saturday. On Sunday, you have the William Singers, and also the Birmingham Youth and Younger Fellowship Choir. So free food, entertainment, bring your lawn chairs, giveaways, food trucks, um, free resources. So, come out and enjoy Hope Fest. It starts at two P M. each day, two to seven o'clock. So please come out, um, and enjoy, uh, Hope Fest. That concludes my announcement, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Council Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things. One, the Kilo Springs Neighborhood will meet tonight at six P M. That meeting is at Smith Middle School. Uh, residents invited to come out and and connect and, uh, fellowship with your other neighbors. I do want to shout out uh, all of our volunteers that came out. I kind of, uh, took a page out of the playbook of, uh, some of my colleagues, and we, we, we did a, uh, serve day and actually, uh, did some renovations on a, on a house in the community for, uh, some seniors, uh, painting the house, did some landscaping, and it was just a fun day. A lot of people came out, uh, really had a good time, even brought my, um, seven-year-old and six-year-old out, made them, uh, paint the house a little bit as well. So, uh, it was just really good. I think we've been kind of growing out there. We, we focused, uh, you know, early on, we did what we called B Litter Free Power of One, which was a litter cleanup, uh, with volunteers, and then we fast forward to looking at the, uh, going back to like twenty twenty-one, and we picked up over twenty thousand pounds of litter. Uh, but it just kind of started doing, doing one cleanup at a time, and it's grown and, um, you know, so this is kind of a next step in how can we continue to mobilize volunteers? And I was excited. So it was a good day, um, and I think that's something that we can continue to build on and do more of, but, uh, beautifies the community and also lets people know, uh, that that they're not, they're not alone. And so I think that's, that was a good, good day. So I enjoyed myself. So thank y'all for, uh, bringing that to the, to the ecosystem. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, in District Five, I just wanted to, um, announce that, uh, the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee is, uh, welcoming applicants for appointment to the BJCTA, uh, Board of Directors. Uh, their, the terms of the current appointments, uh, expire um, this month, and so the Transportation and, uh, Infrastructure Committee will be receiving applications and, um, interviewing, uh, applicants, uh, at the September eighth, um, in, in, in lieu of the September eighth committee meeting. So, uh, please, if you're interested, um, please send your applications to, uh, my office. You can, uh, call two five four two six seven nine, or, uh, email Kimberly dot Phillips at Birmingham A L dot gov, uh, with your resume and letter of interest. Um, and that concludes the announcement. So I need to make a motion, uh, that we take up the tabled item, item number six.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Uh, Attorney King, you want to update us on what's going on?
Yes, so there has been an agreement reached with Faith Chapel on the extension, and they are working out the terms of that agreement.
Okay. Do you guys don't have language with, that you can share with us at this time?
I believe Attorney Scruggs is coming in.
Okay, great.
We have all discussed the matter with, uh, Faith Chapel, and they've agreed to add language, which, uh, allows a one-year extension at the agreement of both parties.
Okay. Council Woods, does that satisfy your request?
Uh, I'm comfortable moving forward at this time.
Okay, any further discussion? Councilor Abbott?
The incentive language, the blanks in the agreement, uh, did somebody fill them in? And can we see it?
I think I can speak to that as well.
Okay.
Apparently, the copy you have was before the, um, amount was finalized, and, uh, we have forwarded to council administrative staff, and, and, and a copy will be forwarded to you, which includes, instead of that blank, the one million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar amount that is, uh, before the council today.
Okay, on page two, where it talks about incentives, that's not incentives to finish fast or anything. That, uh, incentive refers to the amount we're paying for the project.
Page two of the agreement?
Yeah.
Oh, we've learned. Did you tell me where, where on page two you're?
I just dug through all this stuff for Mr. Chaz. Incentive language. So we pay incentives? What kind of incentives? That's just the city assistance that's being provided for the development of the project. That is all it is.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Chief?
It's everything that's outlined in that one sheet that Dr. Vittimo Thomas gave you that outlined construction, F and E, labor, those are considered incentives to them to complete the project on behalf of the city. Yes, that budget.
So it's the one million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents?
That's supposed to be in that blank, yes, ma'am.
Okay. There are a lot of blank blanks in there.
We apologize.
Yeah, I mean, when y'all give us documents, they need to be the real documents, the complete documents, not partial documents.
Yes, ma'am.
Because some of us love to read this stuff, if we can find it.
Yes, ma'am. Understood.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
So I believe we need a motion, uh, let me double check. Need a motion to, you're gonna move to amend the current resolution for additional wording? Or is it just?
Right, so, um, yes, I'll make a motion that, um, we amend the original language that was presented to us to include the information that Attorney Scruggs just provided. Um, specifically, including language that gives the city for a one-year extension, the option for a one-year extension. And the dollar amount on the incentives that are being provided.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right.
Now we need a motion to adopt the item as amended. Some move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, so item six is approved. All right, um, we have a speaker who signed up, who's, uh, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. The speaker is Kimberly Chapman.
Thank you for your patience.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Um, for those who don't know me, my name is Kimberly Chapman, and I'm the civic engagement organizer for Greater Birmingham Ministry. I come to you on behalf of the Executive Director, Scott Douglas, and Systems Change Director, Tori Williams. I am here to announce our new election guide. It is an unbiased guide. It's nonpartisan, and it gives bios for everyone who is running in the election. And, um, it comes with a photo, so I hope you like your photos. Um, this guide is a little different this year. Um, we concentrated on trying to engage, uh, the new voter, um, that eighteen, twenty-year-old voter. Um, we put in some, um, history of the city, the first mayor, the council. Um, we showed them how to get engaged in the city, you know, whether it's agency or boards. It's a one-stop, untethering, shop guide. Uh, everything that you would need to know about election, uh, is in the guide. Um, you can order the guides. We, um, have twenty thousand copies. In two days, uh, I was down to seven thousand copies. So we roughly have, sorry, but about five thousand copies, and they came in Thursday afternoon. So they really, really, people are loving the guide. Um, you can order them via email. You may email electionguide at GBM dot org, or you could just stop by Greater Birmingham Ministry and pick them up. Um, we offer this guide as a community service. There is no fee, and, um, this is what it looks like. So I hope you all enjoy the guide, and, um, we did leave some for the community service so that they could get the guides out to your neighborhood organizations. Do you have any questions? All right.
Council Woods?
No, I just want to say thank you for, for the work you do.
Thank you so much.
They're very nice.
Oh, thank you. I really worked hard on this. This is my first time out the gate, and we all, um, met and discussed what we thought we could put in that would be new and engaging, especially for our young voters. All right.
I, I also want to thank you, um, for including information, uh, about the unopposed candidates not appearing on the ballot. That was something that I wasn't aware of, um, until now. So, um, I think that's important for folks to know so that they're not surprised when they get to the polls. So thank you for putting that in.
Yeah, and that, that's a process, um, especially if you qualify like the last day. But we were very unbiased. We did not contact any of the candidates. You would have to have had a, uh, social media presence or something out there, um, even with the, the council members, you know, to tell something about yourself. So I think you would really like it. It's, like I said, it's unbiased. It's just giving general affirmation for the public, uh, to know who that candidate is, and maybe how the hard they've worked over the years in terms of education, you know, uh, committees that you sit on.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, like I used to say when I lived, walked these halls, it's a great day in Birmingham. Y'all have a good day.
All right, finally, I want to thank our officers on duty, Officer Square and Officer Campbell. Appreciate you being with us. Um, and we're ready for a motion.
I'm looking for a German. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Meeting adjourned.
Yay.
Lordine Alexander, President Pro temp of the Birmingham City Council, representing District Seven. I am so excited about the back-to-school activities that we've had in District Seven for the past few days. We know that our students and families are preparing for their first day of school later this week, but we've had some great opportunities to support our families during this time. We went to Oxmoor Valley Elementary School, where they had a resource fair and a back-to-school rally. It was so great. I'm so grateful. Principal Dr. Melvin Love and his staff, all the families and the students that were out there. They had great resources, and we saw so many smiles of parents and students as they prepare to go back to school. Then we headed on over to Roosevelt Park, where we partnered with the Grace Care Community Development Center, as well as East Brownsville, West Brownsville, and Roosevelt Neighborhoods. They came together for a Great Community Day for these three neighborhoods and a resource fair. Over four hundred participants came and took advantage of the resources that we all partnered together to bring to Roosevelt and to that area. So I'm very excited for what we did on that day and how our partnership worked to make this school year a prosperous one. So I'm wishing every school student a great, prosperous, and safe school year. So, I'm wishing every school student a great, prosperous, and safe school year.
I probably wanna give a shout out to our councilwoman, uh, District Six, Crystal Smithman. She has created such a phenomenal event for the community to eradicate food desert. Yeah, we have farmers here, we have everybody who's bringing all type of whole foods, plant-based foods. It's what we need so we can live a better life. So, we all, we wanna give a shout out to her and say thank you so much. Crystal Smithman for a vision well done.
We're enjoying the fun out here at Memorial Park. This is a great way for family to enjoy and hang out and get together in the city of Birmingham.
Hey, everyone, it's Crystal Smithman, Birmingham City Council, District Six. We're out here in the heart of District Six, at our very last farmer's market at Memorial Park. Wow, what a great summer of farmer's markets we've had. Uh, today, we have free hamburgers, free hot dogs, free ice cream, a live chef demonstration from Chef Amanda, which was amazing, Jones Valley Teaching Farm, free peaches, uh, free pears, free flowers. Um, basically, it's, it's just been amazing. So, shout out to all of our vendors, our farmers, our supporters. Shout out to my staff for another great summer, and I look forward to seeing y'all's summer twenty twenty-six.
Listen, the day has finally come. We've been waiting a long time for this. We finally got in the Collegeville Pool open. Today, at twelve P M., we're gonna have kids coming out, lining up, enjoying this beautiful weather that we have, and enjoying this beautiful water, and just the ability to be able to come out and swim in their neighborhood. And I gotta give a big shout out to, you know, Park and Rec, uh, for making this possible. Um, and, you know, the allocation that was, you know, provided, uh, by my office to be able to make this happen. Like, greatly appreciate everybody that has done their part. We got lifeguards out here. Normally, lifeguards will be done for the summer, but they care so much about the work that they do. They see it as a ministry, that they were like, look, we gotta be out here for these kids. And so, we wanna make sure that we tell them thank you as well, and yeah, we're about to have a good time. I might even jump in and save somebody.
So, we're out at the Crossplex in Central Park Neighborhood on the western side of Birmingham, celebrating the fourteenth anniversary of this facility. And it's a citywide back-to-school Crossplex birthday bash. And this year, the Five Points West community joined in and combined it to make it their Community Fun Day. So, everybody's out from all over town, plus all of the Five Points West community neighborhoods.
This year, we are combining all the neighborhoods together, and we are celebrating with the fourteenth birthday of the Crossplex. There are six neighborhoods in our community. We are Bush Hills Neighborhood. Uh, we have Bellevue Heights, we have Ansley Highland, we have Fairview, uh, and we have Green Acres, the five neighborhoods participating today. And I am the secretary of my neighborhood, which is Bush Hills Neighborhood.
Kids are having fun. District Eight was really proud to be able to sponsor the Kids Zone again this year. And so, children, it's a family-friendly event, everybody's having a big time.